I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kratz, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spakusa.
Present.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Want me to fill in that one under personnel?
Yes, ma'am. They have one item under personnel. It is number fourteen A. And the name to fill in there under administration would be Alyssa, A-L-Y-S-S-A-B-U-N-N. Her appointment to be effective seven eighteen seventeen at a pro-rated annual salary of forty-two thousand through six thirty twenty twenty.
Any other changes to the agenda? Then I need an intent to adopt the agenda with that addition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
You need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held June twentieth, two thousand seventeen for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to share with you the final good news report of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Three hundred and eighty-two members of the Bethel Park High School class of two thousand seventeen graduated on Saturday, June seventeenth, in the high school gymnasium. This year, forty-seven percent of the graduates graduated with honors, meaning that their QPA was a three point five or higher. Eighty-nine percent of our graduates are headed to a two- or four-year post-secondary institution. Five percent are headed to trade or technical school. Three percent are headed to the workforce, and one percent are headed to the military. Speaking at the ceremony were valedictorian Kyle Copeland, salutatorian Libby Jensen, and senior class president Maggie Lowendowski. Bethel Park graduate and retired Brigadier General Mark Bellini was also on hand for a special introduction of the seven graduates who are pursuing opportunities with the military. Congratulations to the class of two thousand seventeen. We are extremely proud of the positive mark that they have left on Bethel Park, and we wish them the best in their future endeavors. There may have been a temporary power outage in the auditorium on the night of the high school awards and recognition program, but thanks to cellphone flashlights and the willingness of the audience to continue on until the power came back on, several of our seniors and juniors were presented with scholarships, awards, and high honor cords from local organizations and universities. You can see a list of this year's awards night recipients on our website. Congratulations to all this year's awardees. The Bethel Park High School Chapter of Quill and Scroll, the International Honor Society for High School Journalists, initiated eight students this year in recognition for their excellent work in the high school's newspaper, yearbook, video production studio, and literary magazine. Congratulations to this year's inductees Hannah Bridge, Reagan Gray, Stephanie Kroll, Jacob Markovickio, Morgan McGrath, Elizabeth Partz, David Peterson, and Janelle Wu. Two teams of the Bethel Park High School students won four awards at the literary festival held at Duquesne University. Winning the insights and talk show events were Andrew Davis, Rachel McLean, Blake Melkett, and Grayden Tomkowitz. Winning the trivia and talk show events were Grace Evans, Casey Mack, Madison Newman, and Jessica Scarlett. The students had to read six books in preparation for this competition. Bethel Park High School Spanish students earned one gold medal, four bronze medals, and twenty-one honors awards at the national Spanish exams. Their names are on the screen before you, but we wanted to give a special mention to the gold medalist Shindea Feliciano and bronze medalist Nathan McCowsky, Rachel McLean, Sidney Burns, and Julia Cable. Bethel Park High School French students earned one gold medal, several silver medals, seven, sorry, silver medals, ten bronze medals, and thirty-one honorable mention medals on the national French exams. Like we did with the Spanish students, all of their names are on the screen, which you can read as we give special acknowledgement to gold medalist Kayla Armstrong, silver medalists Roman Daudski, Ryan Cook, Adrian Slater, Duncan Warner, Cameron Silman, Janelle Rue, and Anton Yanovich, as well as bronze medalist Alyssa Bradley, Madison Newman, Casey Mack, Haley Radcliffe, Joseph Bilske, Patrick Hu, Sue, Zachary Janis, Julian Montanez, Vanessa Vargo, and Jackson Stewart. The Bethel Park High School German club presented the Dietrich Award of Excellence to freshman Brandon Janis because he had the most outstanding academic performance throughout the school year. Senior Ryan Fobb received a certificate of recognition as the most outstanding member of the high school's German National Honor Society for two thousand sixteen-seventeen. Junior Tyler Kreider earned a summer study scholarship to attend the Millersburg, Millersville University Summer German Camp for one week in July based on his enthusiasm for the Bethel Park High School German Club and his study of German at the high school. Congratulations to all three of these students. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School junior Noah Gilheart its May Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary recognizes the Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and/or community. Noah was recognized for his work with the Television Studio Video Production Club and for his award-winning video, The Rubber Band Challenge, which encourages individuals to stop using curse words by wearing a rubber band around their wrist and flicking it on their wrists whenever they swear. Congratulations, Noah. Bethel Park High School athletes had a successful spring sports season. Track athletes Taren Murphy, James Crandall, Zack, James Crandall, Zack Taylor, and Javon Lewis are the WPIAL track champions for the four-by-one-hundred-meter relay. At states, James Crandall finished in sixth place in the hundred-meter, and Zack Taylor finished in eighth place in the long jump. The boys volleyball team won the section championship for the seventh consecutive year, won the WPIAL consolation match, and advanced to the state quarterfinals. The boys lacrosse team were also the section champions and advanced to the WPIAL quarterfinals. The girls lacrosse team and the baseball team also advanced to the WPIAL quarterfinals. The softball team participated in the WPIAL playoffs. Congratulations to all of our spring sports teams for successful seasons. There's a lot of S's. Independence Middle School students were inspired on a daily basis as they walk up and down the ramp that connects the first and second floors of their school thanks to a mural created by Bethel Park High School junior Grace Evans. The theme of the mural was be yourself, and it suggests ways to do that, including be definitive, be inclusive, be supportive, be creative, be inventive, and be innovative, be reflective, and be expressive. The mural was created at Grace's Girl Scout Gold Award Project. The gold award is the highest award in the girl scouting. The project took Grace over forty hours to complete, from sketching to painting. Thank you, Grace, for sharing your talents with the students at Independence Middle School. Independence Middle School eighth graders were recognized for their academic, athletic, artistic, and leadership accomplishments at the annual eighth-grade awards assembly held during the school day. You can see a list of this year's winners online on the IMS latest news webpage. Later that day, Independence Middle School held its annual Academic Excellence Awards Program to present distinguished honors to the one hundred and eight seventh graders and the one hundred and forty-two eighth graders who maintained a minimum three point seven-five GPA through the first three nine weeks of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. Also that evening, presidential academic awards were presented to the ninety-three eighth graders who maintained a minimum three point five QPA from seventh grade through the first three nine weeks of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year and scored advanced on either the PSSA reading or math test. You can see all of these students' names on the IMS latest news webpage. Congratulations to all of these students who were honored on both of these programs. Independence Middle School students on Team Seven A began the school year planning a year-long community service project, and the project concluded with over a hundred favorite children's storybooks collected and donated to the Homeless Children's Education Fund. The students took the project a step further by working together in small groups to record the stories on iPads using their expressive reading skills. The recordings were then burned onto CDs and accompanied the books. In addition to the books and the CDs, the students also donated CD players and headphones. The students also took their learning about homelessness to yet another level by participating in the stand-up art installation at Market Square sponsored by the Homeless Children's Education Fund, where they stood for fifteen minutes in silence, holding a paper mask that they drew of themselves in front of their faces to generate awareness for homeless children and to better understand how it feels to be homeless. As the students stood, IMS teachers distribute a hundred and fifty flyers about the Homeless Children's Education Fund. It was a moving experience for the students, and they had many positive things to say about participating in this event. Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth graders on Team Apollo paid a visit to the Bethel Park High School to work with the Bethel Park High School Big Data class students on a data fluency visualization project that involved radon testing. NAM students in Mr. Rossi's classroom were tasked with conducting radon testing in their homes and putting all of their data into an Excel spreadsheet, which they brought with them to the high school. The Bethel Park High School students in the Big Data class at the high school worked with the NAM students in small groups where they uploaded their data into a mapping program on their Chromebook, which converted their data into colored dots so the students would have a visual picture of not only where the radon testing occurred, but also of what levels the radon appeared. Before the radon testing began, the NAM students did research on radon and put their findings into interactive Google presentations that included abatement solutions, which they shared with the Bethel Park High School students via their Chromebook computers. This project began last summer when Mr. Rossi and Bethel Park High School science teacher Lee Cristofano participated in a summer program at Carnegie Mellon University that focused on data fluency. The students spent time at CMU's Create Community Robotic Education and Technology Empowerment Lab to explore ways to apply the concept of data and technology fluency in their schools. We are extremely proud of this collaboration between Mr. Rossi and Mr. Cristofano and their ongoing partnership with Carnegie Mellon. Franklin third grade students in Muts Lutz's room have been a keen interest in all things Harry Potter, so she created a Harry Potter Math and Science Day with every lesson revolving around Harry Potter-themed lessons, including steam activities. The students embraced the concept and came to school dressed as Harry Potter-themed clothing. One of the assignments the students worked on involved giving each group of students one hundred and five dollars to spend on materials to create their own broomsticks out of branches, zip ties, twine, pipe cleaners, and duct tape. It was a wizardly wonderful day. Memorial and Washington students enjoyed creating Seussical steam sculptures in Mrs. Mittner's art classes. Parents provided donations of a variety of items, including Legos, building blocks, cardboard tubes, plastic cups and lids, swimming pool noodles, gears and packing peanuts, and the students were able to repurpose and transform into whimsical Dr. Seuss-themed sculptures. Some of their projects included cauter kinetic sculptures, dancing puppet theater kinetic sculptures, and marble-run roller coasters, all inspired by the crazy gadgets depicted in some of Dr. Seuss's books. Who knew that you could make music from ordinary items such as bananas, apples, and jello? Washington fourth grade musicians had a great time showing off at the annual fourth grade music assembly, which they turned ordinary objects into musical instruments with the help of Makey Makeys. Makey Makeys are a twenty-first century invention kit that uses the internet to turn everyday objects into touchpads. In this case, the Washington students used Makey Makey to turn spoons into bongos, bananas into piano and drums, jello into a saxophone, and apples into a trombone. The students played their Makey Makey instruments individually and then combined to play Jingle Bells as an ensemble. The project was part of the Washington Steam Initiative. Participating students were Brayden Wright, Nina De Pasquale, Cassidy Sullivan, Trey Slavonic, and Caleb Steele. It was quite impressive to hear them playing Jingle Bells. And that concludes all of the good news we have for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year.
She concluded on Makey Makeys. Thank you. I assume student government and PTA/PTO council are out for the summer? And Solster's report, nothing to report? Okay. We are on to public comments on agenda items this evening. Any agenda item comments? And we will move into business items. Curriculum committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening under curriculum. Would any one like any of those held out? Hearing none, I move under curriculum, number one, independent studies, two, Slippery Rock University student-teacher contract, and number three, professional development. Second?
Items one through three under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are twenty-three items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
I would like to hold out number fourteen A one.
Fourteen A one, okay. Any others?
Number two.
Two? I move that we approve item one, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Item three, attainment of status of professional employees. Item four, approval of staffing changes. Five, approval of board secretary. Six, appointment of board treasurer. Seven, approval of tuition reimbursement. Eight, involuntary transfers. Nine, acceptance of resignation. Ten, change of assignment. Eleven, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance. Twelve, approval of elementary summer data secretary. Thirteen, approval of leave of absence. Fourteen, fourteen-two, A-two would be Sharon Kopi Assistant Director of Finance effective July one, two thousand seventeen, and an annualized salary of forty-five thousand. Item B, professional temporary long-term substitutes. C, classified. Fifteen, approval of two thousand seventeen salaries for administrators, non-act ninety-three. Sixteen, approval of two thousand seventeen, eighteen salaries for non-administrative groups. Seventeen, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park School District Transportation Department. Eighteen memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park School District Transportation Department. Nineteen memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Twenty memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Twenty-one memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Secretaries. Twenty-two memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park Federation of Secretaries. Twenty-three, approval of extended school year staffing.
Second.
Under personnel, we have items one, three through thirteen, fourteen A-two, fourteen B, fourteen C, and fifteen through twenty-three, moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I think Connie deserves a break after having to read all that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item two, approval of extra duty responsibility program.
Second.
Item two has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I will abstain on that item due to a conflict of interest. So that item carries eight, zero, with one extension. Extention. It's time for summer. Mrs. Rule.
I move item fourteen A one, administration, Alyssa Bun, school police officer.
Second.
Item fourteen A one under personnel has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Can you do a roll? Can you do a roll call with that one?
Yeah, we can do a roll call. Mr. Kratz?
Mr. Amadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus?
Abstain.
Mr. Means?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
Abstain.
Mr. Spakusa?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Five yeses.
The pass is five-two-two. Five-two-two. Okay. We are on to facilities and services committee and Mr. Spakusa.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing five items tonight under facility and services, would anyone like any of them held out separately? Hearing none, I will move the following five items. Item number one, the carpet extractor approval. Item number two, the approval of the high school scoreboard. Item number three, approval of the addendum to the geotechnical engineering field evaluation and construction management request for proposal. Item number four, the flooring at Ben Franklin School. And item number five, approval of the high school entrance sign.
Contract.
Contract. Sorry. After listening to Connie, I just got lost there.
Second.
Items one through five under facilities and services committee have been moved by Mr. Spakusa and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes, sir.
Could we just say once again that the high school scoreboard and the approval and the sign that's going to go in front of the school are being paid for through donated money?
Correct. Those are not charged to the taxpayers. Those are bequest money to the district, and we will be doing some honoring of individuals at the appropriate time with those. Finance committee and Mr. Amadis.
Eleven items under finance committee. Would anybody want to have these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move items one through eleven. Number one being the June seventeen salaries and bills. Number two being the bill list for the July two thousand seventeen meeting. Number three being the May two thousand seventeen financial report. Number four, budgetary transfers. Number five, approval of depositories. Number six, renewal of insurance policies. Number seven, post-June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen budget transfers. Number eight, contract with Precision HR Solutions. Excuse me. Number nine, approval of student service contracts. Number ten, purchase of cafeteria supplies for the food service department. And number eleven, waterfront learning services agreement through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through eleven under finance committee have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. And we are on to policy committee and Mr. Means.
Okay, we have five items. Number one is the policy revision. It's a policy revision of policy number two oh four attendance. Number two, that was the final reading. Number two is the second of three readings for policy two oh three, immunizations and communicable diseases. Number two forty-six, student wellness, and eight oh eight food services. And number three, actually, that's okay. Number three, approval of policy, second of three readings, two oh nine point one, food allergy management. Number two oh nine point two, diabetes management. Number four, waiver of procedure for policies, two oh nine point one-one and two oh nine point one-two. And number five is a policy number revision, final reading, and that's for policy two oh nine point one-one, head lice, and two oh nine point one-two, severe allergic reactions. So I would like to move that number one, four, and five be approved. And number one is the policy revision for the attendance. Number four is the waiver of the procedure. And number five is the head lice and severe allergic reactions policies. Would anybody like any of those held out? Okay.
I just need a second.
Second.
Items one, four, and five under policy committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions or comments on any of these? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. We are now at the moment for public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Amy Alkine, twenty-three fifty Wall Street. I just want to let the board know, I sent an email today. By no means do I expect you all to have seen it, but please check your email for that because I know at the committee meeting there was some confusion as to where the emails might be going. So I did send that today. I would appreciate just an acknowledgement that you received it. I did get yours, Mr. Christensen, so thank you for that. So that's all. Please just check your email. Thank you.
Ken Nagle, twenty-six forty-seven Broad Street. I noticed on, under appointment of personnel for the school police officer, it seemed to be one of the votes I've been attending board meetings since the beginning of the school year, and it seemed to be one of the votes that maybe had, uh, the most opposition. I was just wondering, in such a vital position of trust as a school police officer, if it's not in the public's interest to know why there is that conflict? Uh, that's all.
As a personnel item, I would actually advise the board that we don't discuss personnel I could let you know that some board members were not able to be at the interview process. But answers your question a little bit.
Hi, Tiane Neal, twelve fifty-six Clifton Road. I just wanted to revisit one more time because I did receive, um, a message from Pam. Thank you, that the letter did still not go through. And so I did bring a hard copy, but then again, I sent it through my work email today in hopes that you received the letter.
We did.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I did not. Somebody did though, right?
Yeah.
You did not?
I didn't. I looked at mine.
Yeah, mine came in at five forty-five, so.
No, I didn't. I didn't get it.
My, excuse me, if I may. Mine came in on June twelfth. For whatever reason, I got it. I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I was called out of town unexpectedly and I did respond to your email and I brought a hard copy too, so you know that I received yours on June twelfth at ten oh one AM and I responded on June twelfth at two fifty PM. So I have a hard copy.
And I did not get yours as well. So that's what we recognize in the committee, that there was some cost.
And I wasn't here to explain that, but I brought it to you. No, I did respond as well.
Right, that's why I did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do have IT working on that because we had emails from teachers that weren't coming through to us as well, even inner, however you call that. Anyone else? I'll move into board comments then. Mrs. Dobus.
Um, just a, uh, congratulations to the school on a great year and a good wrapping up with the graduation. I wasn't able to be there, but heard everything went well and with all the different awards and everything, that's great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Means.
Okay, as usual, I'd like to congratulate all the people who received awards and I'm sure there's many more who did things that could have been mentioned that weren't. And, uh, it was my pleasure to attend the graduation again and participate in the handing out of diplomas and that's always a fun day for everybody. It's, uh, I know the board enjoys it very much and the students enjoy it a lot more.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Uh, I'm going to reiterate what my fellow board members already said and what Janet shared in the staff report with she and Vicky working on that, but I have some visuals because I was fortunate enough to be able to attend. I have them in dated order here. The awards and recognition program at the high school, you're right, it was dark, but the kids, they had those flash phones, the phones up and they took care of that. And then we attended the Independence Middle School on June the first, a lot of good things going on there. And then Dr. Pascarella and Mrs. Cook and I were fortunate enough to be a part of the Pathfinder School graduation, which took place on Tuesday, June sixth, and, uh, that was a very special day for us. Uh, the twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen retirement luncheon, a few of us were able to join on Thursday, June fifteenth. And of course, graduation, these go in my memory box. It was just a grand day. And then something-
Now, you're not allowed to say the next one because I was going to say it. No, go ahead. I see the pamphlet.
Yes, and I have visuals. I just, I save all these. Ask my husband, I save them all. But, uh, there were several awards, uh, done for a lady by the name of Rita Havran, who is the board secretary over at the Pathfinder School. Now, I want you folks to know that she started at the Pathfinder School in nineteen sixty-six before the building was finished. So she worked from Carnegie and drove back and forth and all that until the building was finished. She then was the school secretary and in the meantime, she accepted an evening job, which is the, uh, group of folks, we being a part of that as well, the South Central Area Special Schools Committee. And currently, there are five school districts who are on that committee and Mrs. Havran was the secretary for us until two thousand seventeen, which gives her a grand total of fifty-one years of experience at the Pathfinder School.
The Pathfinder School.
And I'll be happy to share this with you, but I need it back from my memory box because it's the only way I have. But she's a lovely lady. She worked her heart out for the kids, the staff, and everyone involved, and she will be sorely missed. But it was, and last night was the final of three events and, uh, it just, it was, it was very special and, uh, she earned her standing ovations hands down. So congratulations, Mrs. Havran.
Can anyone believe that someone could do a job for fifty-one years? I don't think that will ever happen again.
Yeah, so, so, thank you and happy summer to everyone and, uh, we'll see you in August.
Thank you.
It definitely won't happen for me. Not fifty-one, no, thank you. No, thank you. I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let everybody bask in the glory of all those comments there. I don't think I need to repeat that. Uh, I would just like to thank all of the students, the staff, the teachers, the administrators, the custodians, the janitors, everybody, the parents, everybody that's made this a very successful school year. And I also commend my fellow board members and the superintendent on a good year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you as well. Mrs. Rule.
Yes, I feel like we've had a really great year and things went pretty smooth this year and I think that says something for the district this year. Um, as far as my report, uh, the woman that Cindy spoke about, I served on a board with her twenty-some years ago. She remembered my name and remembered sitting next, it was like amazing. You know, she just, her mind is so sharp at eighty-nine, I couldn't believe it, but she was great. Uh, we spent at the Allegheny Intermediate, uh, thanked Donna and Cindy for coming. Um, they sat through a forty-seven page, that's our agenda, forty-seven page document. And at that, uh, we also discussed our, um, search for a director for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, which will be real important to our school district since we pay into that to have all their extra services. So it has a big impact on our district. And we did that by teleconferencing, so, um, we should hope to have somebody on board come February before the director leaves. And the other thing that we did is that I signed for the Still Center as their representative on an agreement between the Allegheny Intermediate Union and Still Center, which represents our school also, uh, that they will continue the services with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Instead of hiring new people and adding to the expense so that that expense isn't passed on to the schools, we're going to continue to use their IT service and some of their business support, which will lessen the cost of the district, so that's a good move. And, and we are the second largest, um, student population to attend Still Center. So we have a big financial stake in what they do. And hopefully in another, uh, couple of years, they'll be able to stand alone like the other, um, Votek schools in the state that we will have gotten them that far, so we're hoping.
Perfect. Mr. Workmeister.
Well, uh, even though it's being repetitive from what was said, it's too important to not repeat it because, uh, I would like to also thank all of their, congratulate first of all the students for all their achievements and awards and also to thank all the teachers, administration, maintenance, et cetera, board, superintendent, everybody. That was all part of it to help make the, uh, students achieve what they have done over the year. And being at the graduation was an honor to see, uh, and listen to what these kids have achieved and knowing that, uh, they're going on to whether it be trade schools or college or military and all that, I just look, that's our future. So, uh, keeping that in mind, that's why I know I'm here to try to be part of that a little bit in some small way at least to make sure that our future America has excellent students like Bethel Park produces. So that, I'm thankful for. Also, uh, just a side note that wasn't mentioned, but we were listening to it about the emails, uh, since maybe it's on camera and maybe everybody that, uh, is listening to this might be aware that there is an email problem, so if you ever did send in emails, to be aware that we may not be receiving them and to make sure that, uh, you know, somehow you find out, you know, call and, you know, say, did you get the email at least? Because in some cases, we're not allowed to really respond because of legal matters, but, uh, nonetheless, we do read them and we do take everything seriously. I know, I do, I know the board does that too, so I can't speak on behalf of the board because I know you guys do, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Christensen.
Uh, I don't have anything tonight other than to wish everybody a good summer. It's a short one, but enjoy it.
Mr. Ammitz.
Yes, I wasn't planning on saying anything this evening, but I, it's just reflecting on some of the things we saw in our awards, it just got me to thinking, I had to be out of town today and, uh, it was in an area that was nowhere near as fortunate as, uh, we are in. So when I come back home to Bethel Park, I see our homes, I see my home, I see the other homes in the area. And then I come in and I look at the presentation this evening and I see all the awards and accolades that our students have received and it just makes me feel proud to be a part of this community we live in. And other than that, have a nice summer.
I concur. Graduation is my favorite activity of the year. We, when I first got on the board, there was talk about not having board members, um, pass out diplomas because we got a new principal and it wasn't the practice in the previous district. And there were several of us who said, well, we will resign from the board if you take that away from us because that is the one reward that we have being on the board. Um, congratulations to Mrs. Havran. Enjoy your retirement. You deserve it. You earned it. Fifty-one years of service and, um, like Cindy said, sharp as a tack, still kept us in line for the last, what, four years that we've been on the Pathfinder Board. And, um, I guess the only other comment I want to make is just in general, um, to the public that board members, as board members, we don't handle the day-to-day operations of the district. I think sometimes people lose sight of exactly what board members do and we are the board of directors. We are the oversight, but we are not hands-on day-to-day activities. We don't always know even what goes on in the day-to-day activities. Hopefully, there aren't too many problems, but the problems that are out there are handled by our administration, our staff, our teachers, um, our, um, employees, and they aren't truly handled by the board. Have a great summer, everyone. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.